We'll be back in session. Dwayne, if you sure could do roll call, please.
Dingfelder.
Here.
Goots. Maniscalco. Citro. Miranda. Carlson.
Here.
And Vera.
Here.
I'm here too.
Okay, we are onward to item number nine, and again, we continually thank you all for your patience.
Mary Saminiego, Planning, Design and Development Coordination. Item number nine is REZ 1947. It's a reserving request from Plan Development to Plan Development for a place of religious assembly.
Jennifer Malone with your Planning Commission staff. This is located in the central Tampa Planning District, more specifically within the East Tampa Urban Village. It's now within an evacuation zone. Heart Routes 1231 and 5 serve the subject site. Mary, if I'm, if you don't mind, I'll, I would, I'll just give like a brief history. We reviewed this, and it was a PD. It came through in, I think, 2016. I'm not going to spend too much time on my report, because there's only a minor alteration between the 2016 PD and the PD that we're reviewing today. So I happen to be really familiar with it. It was one of the first pieces I worked on when I got here. South of East Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. With a couple of variety of parcels that the church or the place of religious assembly is putting into one PD. It's mostly residential in this area, as well as some commercial uses along North 29th Street. So then we have three future land use categories on the subject site. We have community mixed-use 35, community commercial 35, and then residential 20, which is usually, which is basically all used, the residential 20 for their parking and retention, which is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So we did find this consistent, again. Again, on the PD, the applicant has proposed several crosswalks and sidewalks, creating safe access and entrances to the building for their, for their churchgoers. So we did find that consistent, as well as consistent with the policy direction of the East Tampa Urban Village, which creates, wants to produce a high-quality built environment that respects Tampa's unique history. And then we did find this was comparable and compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mary Saminiego, Land Development Coordination. Okay, so this project was approved as a PD in REZ 19, I'm sorry, REZ 201672, for a place of religious assembly. This is currently the current church for, in East Tampa, in the College Hill area. So this is the current church. So the 2016 plan, in summation, approved a PD to construct a new place of religious assembly, sanctuary on this vacant property. The church would retain this property to do some fellowship activities, and then all of these individual pieces would either be open space or parking for said place of religious assembly. So... When this was approved, back in 2016, this is the old plan. This shows the existing church retained, the new sanctuary, and then various individual parking lots. Part of the approval in 2016 was a large 80-foot front yard setback because of this grand tree. One of the criteria within the code of a plan development can be changed administratively if cer, if there's certain criteria called substantial change criteria outlined in the code. One of the criteria is that you cannot change perimeter setbacks. So after the 2016 approval, it was determined that this much of a radius for this grand tree was not necessary. So it certainly could have been reduced, that this was an unnecessary setback. So finding that information out, the applicant is proposing a new plan where they're increasing the square footage of the sanctuary proposed to be constructed. It does not increase the capacity as far as total seats or any of the requirements, but now they're increasing the size of the church, decreasing the setback, and still providing an adequate protective radius for that grand tree per the City of Tampa Natural Resources Department. Everything else remains the same. You'll see in your staff report, I've listed the four original, still applicable waivers that were granted per REZ 1672. The new proposal does not have any additional waivers. Saying that, the Development Review Compliance Staff has found this consistent with the City of Tampa Land Development Code. Again, there are some changes between first and second reading for data that needs clarified on the site plan, so please include that in your motion revision sheets. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions? Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you. Why did the buffer get requirement, why was the buffer requirement reduced from the 80-foot to whatever it is now?
They did a reevaluation on the grand tree and determined that, because of the capacity...
Who, who did?
The City of Tampa Natural Resources Department.
Is that a part of our report?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I mean that specifically the natural resources report is in here?
Not the specific, no, not the natural resources report, but Natural Resources did a review, and it was determined that that large of a, an 80-foot protective radius is, was not required. So they did a reevaluation of the grand tree and determined that a smaller protective radius would still adequately protect the tree.
I heard you say that, but I assumed the tree didn't shrink, so I was just trying to figure out what changed. Did, did our code change? Did our protective criteria change? State law change? I don't know.
No, it wasn't a change due to any law. Upon initial review, the applicant, given the protect, given the tree and the location and the canopy and the state of the tree, the applicant proposed to have a large setback from that area. They, they overestimated...
What they needed.
The need for the protective radius.
So that was sort of voluntary on their part, and then they kind of came back later and said, can we shrink that down?
I'll let the applicant speak to that, but that's my understanding, yes. That they asked the Natural Resources Department to do a reevaluation on the tree to see what is the minimum protective radius. It was determined that they could get a significant amount of additional square footage for their building, however, they ran into a perimeter setback problem, and that is what required them to come before you tonight.
Is Natural Resources here tonight?
No, sir, they are not.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Perry Sullivan. Essentially, it's the same diagrams that Mary presented. We did not ask for an 80-foot radius. That was a mandate on us from Natural Resources. Not only an 80-foot radius, yet even asked for to put bollards around, so we can definitely stay out of it. They asked for an arborist. We did an arborist report, and still weren't able to reduce that any. Come around again, doing close construction, we hired a second arborist. He went back to them, and they decided, well, maybe it is a little excessive. So, okay, we're going to give you guys a break and go down to 20 feet. So... That being said, a year later, a couple thousand dollars, you know, we're here representing the same thing. Everything was approved. There was no opposition in the beginning for any of this, and now we're back doing the same process all over again to reduce that 80 to 20 feet. Any questions?
Any questions from counsel for the petitioner? Okay, let's go to public comment for item number nine. Were you finished, sir?
Oh, yes.
Okay, just making sure. Is anyone here to comment on item number nine? If so, please come forward. We have a motion to close. We have a motion to close by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by Councilman Goots. All in favor? Any opposed? Councilman Carlson, do you mind, sir, taking item number nine?
REZ 1947 ordinance being presented for first reading. An ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 3814, comma, 3831, and 3914 North 29th Street, comma, 2631 East 32nd Avenue, comma, 2616, comma, 2618, 2621, 29, and 2915 East Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard in the Ta, the City of Tampa, Florida. More particularly described in Section 1, from zoning classification, PD, Plan Development, Place of Religious Assembly, to PD, Plan Development, Place of Religious Assembly, providing an effective date.
We gave you the easy one, but...
And that exists, and that was the revision sheet?
With revision sheet. With the revision sheet.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carried with Citro being absent. Second reading and adoption to be held on August 22nd, 2019 at 9:30 a.m.
Okay, last is item number 11.
Mary Saminiego, item number 11 is REZ 15, no, REZ 1954. The property is at 405 South Westland Avenue from RM 16 to PD for multifamily residential.
Jennifer Malone with your Planning Commission. This is located in the central Tampa Planning District. There's our two transit stops located within .2 miles of the subject site. Bus Route 19 and 14 serve the site, and it is within a Level C evacuation zone. It's located on Southwestland Avenue. This is West Azalea Street, and then this is South Howard Avenue. It is back real close to all these great establishments on South Howard Avenue. I think World of Beer is up here. A lot of commercial activity over there. And so over on this side of the aerial, this is a lot of multifamily development. A lot of those attached townhomes that we've seen, which is reflected on the future land use map, the future, the adopted future land use is Residential 35. That's that darker brown color, and that allows the multifamily development at slightly higher densities. This is community mixed-use 35 along South Howard Avenue, where all of those commercial activities are taking place. We did find this consistent with the comprehensive plan. The, there is a policy that encourages, and Mary and the applicant, I'm sure will speak to this, but I'll speak on the Planning Commission's policy and, and how the, how, how we felt that the applicant met that policy. There's a policy in the comprehensive plan that encourages multifamily developments to have the front doors facing the sidewalk or public right of way, and not the alley, the, the alley that's behind the development. The applicant has proposed doors on the side with, with the sidewalk connection, and the Planning Commission, in reviewing this and reading our policy, has found that to be a reasonable alternative, and that they have met the intent of the policy. And that is our staff's view and interpretation of that policy. We worked with the applicant on this, and, and we agreed that this was a, this was a good way to, to reach the intent of that policy. So with that being said, we did find it consistent. It meets our policies under the multifamily residential areas about increasing the diversity and for the sustainability of multifamily residential areas. They're within their density. They would act, once again, they could actually build more under their future land use category, but they're not. That being said, found it consistent with the policies of the comprehensive plan, and that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mary Saminiego. Here's a zoning map of the subject property. It's in green. Again, as we saw, somewhat similar to a project we had earlier this evening, this is an area of transition over to higher-density residential as envisioned by the City of Tampa Comprehensive Plan. This subject property currently has a single-family dwelling, pushed way back into the lot. Directly to the south, it's a series of townhomes. Across the street are more townhomes, and then introduced first with some single-family houses. This is a townhome, a quadplex development with an internal courtyard, and then a single-family house up and down both sides of the street. This is a plan development, as I stated, for four units with this layout. Two of the units would face Westland, and two of the units would face the improved alleyway in the back. Now, that is a 20-foot alleyway, I will note. As far as waivers requested, the code requires that all units must face a public right of way, and the code specifically says not including alleyways or rear or side yards. These front doors on these two units face a public right of way. However, for the two rear units, their front doors face side yards. So that is a waiver request that is required to be approved by City Council, which City staff has found inconsistent. The second waiver is to reduce the parking from nine spaces to eight. Each unit is required to have 2.25 parking spaces. So there's eight in the driveway, in the garages. So they need one guest parking spaces, which are not inclu, which cannot be counted within the proposed driveways. So that is a waiver reduction from nine parking spaces down to eight, which is 11% reduction, which the Transportation Division found inconsistent. Then the last waiver that they're requesting from standards, applicable standards in the Land Development Code, is to reduce the required multifamily green space from 350 square feet per dwelling unit to 208 per unit, which is an overall deficit of 567 square feet, and they would have to pay into the current rate into the district in lieu of time of permitting. I know the applicant will speak to this. If this is approved, Planning, Design and Development Coordination has several modifications between first and second reading. I will clarify for the record, the fir, the second bullet on page two of the corrections states units one and units two must have an unobstructed four-foot wide sidewalk to each of the front doors from Southwestland Avenue. I want to strike that from the requirements that is no longer applicable. Transportation, again, like I said, found it inconsistent due to the parking reduction. They do have some changes between first and second reading as well. So overall, the Development Review Compliance Staff did find this inconsistent. Please refer to your findings in the staff report related to transportation finding of inconsistency for parking reduction, as well as Planning, Design and Development Coordination's inconsistent finding due to the rear unit door placement.
Any questions from the council? Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, council. It's been a pleasure spending the evening with you. As Mary has pointed out, there's, there's a couple of things, and I want to first go through the photos of the adjacent properties.
Not a big crowd here tonight, Steve.
I'll, I'll abbreviate it and just close right now if you like, but, but I think you want me to go through this. This is a subject property. This is a rear view of the subject property. This is the property along the alley, but you can see the second floor of the existing structure encroaches over the alley. This is a view looking down the alley. We're required to have a 20-foot paved alley per the fire department's requirements, and also to accommodate the backing space. This is the adjacent property at 407 Westland, and you can see the doors actually face the alley. They don't, they don't face this, the fr, the other side of the front. These are all rear pictures. This is 409. These are, this is going south. This is every, every property southward to the next block. And you see the doors and the, and the garages there. What we've proposed to do, and this really is a design element that we've worked out. We spent a lot of time talking to the Planning Commission and City staff. It is, it is a compromised position, and I believe it meets the spirit of the code. On Westland, we have the two doors fronting on Westland. The two rear units, unit two and three, the doorways are here and here, and they're connected with a sidewalk that goes all the way from the alley all the way out to Westland. And then to make that connectivity occur and make the addressing simpler, and I met with the fire marshal about this, and they, they were satisfied that this was a reasonable solution. We have archway entries on Westland that identify the unit numbers, so that when you're driving down and you're trying to find a unit, you, you can find it here and here on each of the sides. And those are not, those are in addition to the other doorways that are in the front. As the staff has pointed out, the Planning Commission found it consistent. The staff would like to see a little different design. We cannot accommodate it. Simply, the pattern in this area is for infill. It is trending strongly toward multifamily and townhouses. We, we've noted that this backs up to the commercial district on Howard, and that's a commercial-serving alley, which is, which is very active and heavily used. It's an underutilized lot. The code encourages infill development, and actually, as, as I said, this is consistent with all of the other developmental surrounding there. It's, I, I think, you know, I'll be happy to suspend my, my presentation, but we've met the spirit of the code. They're not allowing us to count the parking in the, in the driveway, which they've used to in the past, but we still need those waivers to meet the code. So specifically, we need the, the green space waiver, the one parking space waiver, and the access waiver, and the location waiver for the doorway to be on the sides.
Anything further, sir?
I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the council? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm finished. No rebuttal.
There being none, is anyone here from the public here to comment? Item number 10. If so, please come forward, and you will get through the number. I'm sorry, 11, sorry. A motion to close by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by Councilman Miranda. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, and I don't know who was next. I think Councilman Miranda, I think.
Yes, sir. I'm move, I'm number 11, file number REZ 19-54. An order is being presented for first reading consideration. An order is to rezoning property in general vicinity of 405 Southwestland Avenue in the City of Tampa, Florida, more particularly throughout Section 1, from zoning districts classification RM 16 residential multifamily, PD, Plan Development residential multifamily, providing an effective date. The petitioner has met the burden of proof, and is competent that all the evidence is consistent, along with the information given to the fire department, where the addresses would be located so they can be identified, and the parking waiver of one.
And with a revision sheet?
With a revision sheet.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carried with Citro being absent. Second reading and adoption to be held on August 22nd, 2019 at 9:30 a.m.
Okay, next we go to motions, et cetera.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Dingfelder, anything, sir?
Two things, Mr. Chairman, in regards to planning. I'd like a report back from our planning staff on the possibility or feasibility of two things. Number one, an area-wide rezoning for the Westshore Palms area. That's one of, that's where we discussed earlier, the, I called it spot zoning, but off of Lois and Manhattan, that area out there. And, and number two, for the staff to come back in 60 days to discuss the possibility of an overlay for Davis Island.
Second, then.
So... Correct.
Okay, and, and I'm sorry, did you give a date, sir?
60 days.
Okay, I mean, do we have a date for that?
September, late September.
Staffordport.
Staffordport would be the September 19.
That's fine.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, counsel. And then sadly, the Gator Nation lost Mr. Two-Bits, George Edmondson, earlier in July. They're going to be having a celebration of his life in August, and I'd like to be able to present, possibly present a commendation to his family.
Second.
As a, as a great man.
We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Councilman Goots. Councilman Maniscalco.
Make a motion that we go to bed.
Second. Councilman Miranda.
Yes, Chairman, I got a few of, at the request of the Planning Commission, I make a motion to set a plan amendment adopted hearing for the Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendment Number 19-09 and the Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1910, and a plan amendment transmittal hearing for the Tampa Comprehensive Plan 19-02, Tampa Comprehensive Plan 19-07A through E, and Tampa Comprehensive Plan Number 1908 on the evening of September 26, 2019 at 5:01 p.m.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's it. Okay, Councilman Carlson. And, oh, and one thing. It was something that was brought up by our, our friend, Councilman Dingfelder, with regards to people. I guess, I, I would talk to you about it privately, but since it was brought up, I can't. And this is probably the best time to bring it up, since no one's here. I'm just being very frank, because we can speak openly. Were you referring, sir, to, to speakers, or to like people in public comment, correct?
Correct.
Okay, what are your thoughts on that?
I just know in the past that the gavel has come down when people started yelling at us. They could say pretty much what they want, as long as they're not obscene or vulgar, perhaps, but just the yelling, and I was hoping it would sort of ease up, but it hasn't seemed to ease up since I got the one.
Yeah.
So, so anyway, I didn't mean to make it a big deal, but just...
Oh, no, I just wanted to follow up on your thoughts. Again, it's a very reasonable position. Mr. Shelby, are there any, is there anything that would preclude us? I know that our past chair, Councilman Reddick, had some items that were to be read before public comment. I, I set aside those, just for my own reasons. Is there anything that precludes us from putting rules as to a volume?
Count, the chair, the, if the chair finds the tone or the manner or the volume with which one is communicating their thoughts, as long as you don't have an issue with what necessarily...
They're saying...
Content, choosing content, then you certainly, as part of your ability to control the decorum of a limited public forum, you have the right to ask somebody to, to temper their, their volume without issue.
And, and the, the challenge with that is if we do it for one person, we have to do it for everybody universally. Trust me, to quote our, what is it? Gosh, I'm tired, 41st President, I feel your pain on that, trust me. But, but it's something that we can certainly take into account, but it's certainly well-taken, Councilman Dingfelder.
Yeah, it's definitely not content-related, as far as I'm concerned. Like I say, say what you want, but just don't quit yelling at us, you know?
I'm with you, my friend, trust me. Okay, any motion received and filed? We have a motion by Councilman Maniscalco, we have a second, switch it out of here. We have a second by Councilman Carlson, oh, Ms. Moore. Well, I guess we can't until...
I just wanted to say thank you all so much. I know that this is a lot, working through this new bill, and I really appreciate all your efforts. You guys did an amazing job, thank you.
We appreciate you.
Thanks for your help.
We, we have a motion on the floor, all in favor? Any opposed?